Okay. Morning, everyone. Thank you for attending our Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for a pledge to the plank.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Don't see anyone here for public comments, so I'll assume that we can move on to the business at hand, which includes taking the last of the business of two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, and concluding that. And we'll start with the Salary Board approval of the minutes for the year two thousand twenty-three.
Should we approve the minutes from two thousand twenty-three?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion or deletions or additions or corrections? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. And we'll seek a German, uh, sign of die.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we'll convene the Board of Assessment under, and we'll suspend our meeting and move on to Board of Assessment's arrangements.
Okay, um, so first let me pull that to the spot. I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of the two thousand twenty-three assessment appeal hearings.
Approve, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Is there any other business to be brought before? Do we have to elect the officers, I believe?
That comes next. This is just a journey, signed it up.
Oh, okay.
Finishing out the year.
Alrighty. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moment, second.
Thank you. All in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
We'll reconvene the meeting and, and, uh, under the Board of Elections. Prove the minutes of the meeting of two thousand twenty-three.
The motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments, deletions, additions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. So moved. Now we'll go to the County Board of Minutes for, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Adjourned, signed it up.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Stand adjourned for that part of the meeting. Move on to the County Board for approval of the minutes of the December twenty-eighth, twenty-three meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or additions, deletions?
Will you give me a second to go get a cover sheet? I don't think I have one of those. And that's what's throwing me off.
No, no, I don't.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
He took care of that.
He took care of it.
Oh, he didn't vote yet. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, so moved. Now we will adjourn, sign it, aye, if there's a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into the organizational meeting. Okay, so we will look for a motion to appoint a, a chairman of the Board for two thousand twenty-four.
I feel quite, um, Mr. Phillips.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, so moved. Now we'll seek a motion to approve the Vice Chairman of the Board for two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion to appoint Commissioner Kuhn.
Second the motion. Favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now we'll seek a motion to approve the Secretary of the Board. Yeah, but if you would have moved.
Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, Commissioner Litz for that position.
And second the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now we want to appoint, uh, Mr. Walgumuth as County Administrator for two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. And we need to move, or get a motion to approve our Solicitor for two thousand twenty-four, Matthew J. Bugley.
Got motion?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now we, this is a motion to approve, uh, or appoint all the employees of the county payroll, uh, to their respective positions effective December twenty-fourth, twenty-three, for the year twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve all of the existing county employees on the payroll.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now move on to the schedule of our meetings for two thousand twenty-four, which has been attached to your units, or your packets, and look for a motion to adopt the, uh, schedule.
Motion to adopt that schedule.
Second.
It was in seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Second, let's do the. Congratulations, sorry.
Yeah. Now we'll move on to, uh, liaisonships. I've proposed a few changes. Everyone is back, has a packet, or should I read? I'll read the new list as I, as I'm proposing. These are the liaisonships for two thousand twenty-four. And, um, I will continue with Community Action Partnership, Commission on Drug and Alcohol, Department of Emergency Services, the Expo Center, Penn State Cooperative Extension, um, IT, City of Lebanon, and Area Agency on Aging. And I'm proposing for Michael Kuhn. The, um, we'll continue with the Lebanon Valley Destination Marketing Organization, United Way, Economic Development, and Lebanon Transit, and Mental Health, Renova, Children and Youth, Governor Dick. And I'm proposing adding elections and planning to Mike's, uh, liaisonships. And Commissioner Litz, uh, continue, uh, with Assessment, Conservation District, um, Geographic, uh, G I S, um, uh, Commission for Women, Veterans Affairs, uh, the WIB, and Building and Grounds Chair, uh, Chamber of Commerce, and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Those are my proposals for twenty-four, and seek a motion to adopt those.
So moved.
No, second, the motion. Comment or question?
Um, I do have a question. With these changes, um, have you checked out when the dates are and the meetings and things of that nature?
I did not investigate all the liaisonships and all the meetings for two thousand twenty-four. I have to admit that I did not do that.
Okay.
I was thinking Red Bell and Authority meets on a, on a Wednesday afternoon.
Which Wednesday?
Wednesday, so it'll be the second Wednesday. Seven, three thirty. Three thirty. Thank you.
Okay, um, it's, I wished I would have had this ahead of time to chart it out. I, I mean, I can do whatever I'm assigned, except that there are Wednesdays when I have like five meetings already. So if this adds to it, um, I was looking to move one to another Wednesday. And so, um, this is a little confusing to me because I don't have a calendar or time to check all this out when all these meetings are held. If this one also adds to that same day, I don't know logistically that it's going to be possible, that's all.
So Conservation also meets on a Wednesday at lunchtime, correct?
Yes.
Which Wednesday is that, or is it a Thursday?
It's Thursday. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh. So this is a Wednesday meeting?
Yeah, none of the others on your list, I don't think. Uh, Chamber, I'm not, I don't know when the Chamber meets.
They meet, um, like a Monday at three. Okay, so this is a Wednesday, not a Thursday. I just know those two days get really full, and then if we have assessment appeals and things like that, it could run into that, but it's not a Thursday. Okay. I just needed to talk that out, so I had, it would be, I don't know, I don't want to add to Dawn's, but if, if they're going to be changing, it would be nice to have those dates that are, so we can evaluate that, that's all.
Well, the, the liaison, liaison assignment, we sent a letter to liaison assignment and asked them to coordinate with you for their meeting dates. So if this list is adopted, then you would get, you would have a contact from.
I thought it was asking Dawn to give her a preview.
Oh, big point.
That's what I get, I gathered, I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that should be, so we can look at that. It just gets a little tight to have everything on the same day.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now we'll move on to, uh, sound. Start with the, uh, depository, so that we will approve for the year two thousand twenty-four. And you've received the list of those depositories and the list of, uh, of, uh, the accounts within those, uh, banks. So we'll seek a motion to approve those for two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve, approve the depository banks.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any comments or questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now we'll move on to the Salary Board motions.
It's first. Twenty thirty and a nay is.
What do you want?
Salary Board organized page.
Just the books.
Right there, it's in your right hand, I think. It'll be right after the pository. Right. Salary Board, we're gonna be able to.
Put it there, you have a problem.
What's that?
Check behind that one, maybe. Bingo.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the Salary Board, which, um, includes for twenty-four, twenty-four, uh, the Chairman of the, uh, Salary Board, adoption for that motion, I need. So moved. By virtue of me being chair, it's Phillips.
Oh, yeah. So it was, it's the chair Phillips.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now move on to the Vice Chairman of the Salary Board. Nominate Commissioner Kuhn for Vice Chairman of the Salary Board.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now we'll seek a motion to approve the Secretary of the Salary Board.
Secretary, Commissioner Litz.
I'll second the motion. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now move on to the Solicitorship. Um, we have a motion, seek a motion for appointing Matthew Bugley as our Solicitor for the year two thousand twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
It's removed in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved.
The one that we, uh, I shouldn't say we, it was me last year.
Okay. Okay, thank you for reminding us.
You did. Sure.
Moving on to Salary Board motions, I have several motions. The first, motion to set the salaries of the employees within the Office of the Controller as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of the Courts as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of the Protonitory Clerk of Court as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
District Attorney.
She's not here.
Oh.
The catch-all motion, they're okay, like.
Yeah, that's fine.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of the Recorder of Deeds as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees in the Office of the Register of Wells Orphans Court as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second. There you go.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of the Sheriff as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of the Treasurers as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved.
Motion to set the salaries of all other county employees as established during the budget hearings for two thousand twenty-four or as directed by their current collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Thank you, Michelle. Motion to adjourn salary.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. Okay, we'll suspend our meeting and move on to the Assessment.
Tell the meeting of the Assessment Board to order. And the first, first order of business is to nominate the Chair.
Commissioner Litz.
Sir, second.
If I were to turn the county code, I will second the motion.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, is there a motion for Vice Chair?
Yeah, my cool.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'll accept a motion to appoint Jamie Walgumuth as our Administrator to the Board at no additional compensation for his services. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then at this time, we're looking to appoint a Solicitor to the Board.
What motion to approve?
Second.
Second motion.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We also need to appoint the Chief Assessor, who is at this time, Daniel Seaman. Is there a motion?
Motion, three.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same.
Excuse me, are you voting yes for these? I don't hear.
I was, I would, really only have to vote if there's a tie, but yes, otherwise.
Okay, I just want to be sure we don't have an issue of split votes and so on. That might come up. Okay, I just not, I wasn't hearing, aye, an aye, okay.
Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to have a motion to approve that the County Commissioners authorize the pay of all necessary expenses incurred by the Board of Assessment, revision of taxes, from appropriations budgeted by the Commissioners for such necessary and legal expenditures.
So moved. Second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Is there a discussion?
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make you aware that I'll be pursuing the, uh, in paneling of a, separate group to do the assessment hearings. Uh, as part of our, it's in our budget for the next year for twenty-four, and that will be part of the expenses, which will be, you know, something different. But I'll be pursuing that in the first quarter of next year.
Is there a, um, second?
It's been moved in seconded. In discussion.
Um, under discussion, I will be voting against that move because I think we are elected to do this job. And the only reason I could see to change it is if you, um, didn't want to follow the law that I was Chair. It's the only thing I really chair. And I feel strongly that that is a position we all had to take certification courses and get certified to do this. And I think we should continue, so.
Oh, with all due respect, uh, it's simply that we are, uh, doing the assessment hearings, and we're also setting the millage. And to me, that, uh, there should be some separation there, and that's why I'm looking for an independent panel to do the assessment hearings, and then we could do the, uh, the tax nerf issue.
I don't think that that has any, uh, correspondence in, corresponding negativity, in my opinion, so.
I'm sure.
I, I'm a no. Okay. Is there a mo- motion to establish the dates, actually? I would.
You need to vote on, uh, actions. We were in discussion. I don't think it took the full vote.
You voted no without asking for a difference.
Okay, I thought they already voted. Is there any, uh, let's call for the vote, Dan. All in favor on the, um, necessary expenses?
Aye.
And I voted no. So now we're moving on.
I just want to, I just want to be clear. What I had for the minutes was that you stated that you intend, intend to oppose the, the concept that he, uh, that he spoke about.
You knew that part of the motion.
No, it was in discussion.
Yeah, it was in discussion. It wasn't, it wasn't, the motion was just to approve the expenditures.
No, it was just not about, that wasn't a part of the.
So I just, I just want to be clear for the minutes. If you were stating your, that you intend to oppose the concept, or if you were, or did you oppose the, the full motion?
I opposed the full motion because I, uh, did not agree with the discussion part because he said that was part of the motion. Or part of the budget.
Okay, I just want to be clear for the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, under the hearing dates, um, I did want to change something there. But I guess we have to get it on the, we need a motion so we can discuss it.
I'll make a motion for those dates, I'll present it.
Second.
Okay, then I would like to ask for an amendment to the motion because we have, uh, again, going to the fact that some of these are held on a Thursday, all on this, at the same time. They're currently the third Thursday, and I would ask that they be moved to the first or second Thursday. The third page does have a list of the dates that are proposed. Would you consider an amendment?
To the, the first or the second, I've, that doesn't matter to me, I have, those are my choices, I'd prefer the first.
Okay.
Same date, same meeting.
And you're willing to amend your motion?
I'd support the first. Okay, so Commissioner Kuhn, you're amending a motion to the first Thursday.
Yes.
Agree with the second, second.
Okay, then the motion, um, and the dates are there. So the motion is to move the Assessment Appeals to the option of the first Thursday of the, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Before you go to adjourn, but I just want to be clear again on the minutes. You, you had stated that you vote on ties.
Right.
So does that, did, did you cast a vote for the Administrator, the Solicitor, and the Chief Assessor?
I, well, I, I vote on, on ties, so, I mean, but otherwise it's assumed that it's a yes, but.
Well, I'm just asking, should we record a vote in the affirmative for those? You, you, you voted to oppose the, the appropriations budget.
I did.
And you voted to agree the new schedule, but neither of which were a tie, so I'm just asking it.
But it was a change, so I felt compelled. But, um, I don't think I technically voted on them. I was holding my vote if there was a.
We just never recorded it that way before, so I don't know if I was supposed to have a two, but, you know.
If, it, we'll ask the Solicitor what he recommends, and I will honor that. How's that?
What, in that, in that situation, would you abstain? I would, I would recommend then maybe, uh, marking it as an abstention in that circumstance for purposes of keeping the minutes clean.
All right, otherwise, there's, there's no record of, of a vote. So.
Okay. That's fine, if that's what he recommends.
So you're, you abstain on the vote for Administrator, abstain on Solicitor, and abstain on Chief Assessor?
I guess I did, yes.
And I want to clear in the minutes that I did not add to that motion, that that was just in the discussion. Time for, yeah.
Uh, I have, Commissioner Phillips stated that he intends to propose that an alternative appointed Board of Assessment, uh, for two thousand twenty-four. Commissioner Litz stated that she would be opposed to that concept and then the vote.
As long as it's a part of the motion, I can change the, the contract.
Okay.
Make, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Good. Election Board, we'll convene the Election Board. And, uh, we'll look for a motion to approve a Chairman of the Election. Uh, nominee, uh, Commissioner Kuhn as Chair of the Election Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. Seek a motion for Vice Chairman of the, uh, Election Board.
Um, Mr. Phillips, Vice Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, so moved. Now for Secretary.
Motion to approve, let's.
Second the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, so moved. Anything else to come before the Election Board?
Chief.
People are Solicitor, I'm sorry, I should.
We'll go with, uh, the approval of the Chief Clerk for the year, Jamie Walgumuth.
Treasurer.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, I, I don't find that.
I think you do. You should have that one back it.
I buried it already.
It should have been. Yeah.
Hmm.
Yep. Yep. Okay, Sean Drasher for twenty twenty-four. So.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most same signs, so moved. Okay, for Solicitor, Matthew Bugley for the, uh, year twenty twenty-four for Election Board Solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most same signs, so moved. Now a motion to approve the, uh, expenses for the Board of Elections as needed for the twenty twenty-four year.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most same signs, so moved.
I know, uh, if I may, I had heard, it actually goes back to the previous vote, but I had heard, uh, I've asked for a Solicitor's recommendation, and I want to make sure that that gets reported in the minutes. I think that will apply to more than just that particular vote in the future.
For adjourn, any Election Board?
Motion. During.
Second.
We stand adjourned, thank you. Second, conclude our business, Jim.
Just adjourn your regular words since you reset the election.
And that's everything. Seek a motion for adjourn, uh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you all for attendance. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
You stand adjourned.